Six o'clock, call the work session ordered. Can we have the roll call?
Counselor Solzky?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Stiditt?
Counselor Urban?
Here.
Counselor Roberts?
Here.
Here.
May I open with something?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I owe this council and certain members of this council an apology and members of staff, including our city manager. This topic of homelessness, at times I have not been handling very professionally. And reason why is because I lived it and I've been going through some real emotional PTSDs and bad dreams and I was always... This has been really rough and I'm sure it's been emotional for a lot of us. But I really hope you'll accept my apology and as we try to move forward from this day on, so I gotta clear my throat, this is really emotional. I have made mistakes in the way I've addressed this issue. I really want to be able to work together because I really respect all of us in this room. We've done some amazing things in the past and once again, I just want to say I'm sorry and I hope you'll accept my apology. It's been rough for me, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that.
Just for the record, Counselor Stiditt showed up. Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to declare a potential conflict of interest. I work for a community sharing program. We're a nonprofit that provides housing or basically housing assistance. We have no intention on applying for any shelter proposals that the city may do, but I need to declare a potential conflict of interest in case.
Okay. Item three, homeless discussion. Come prepared to answer the question, what do you want the city's response to homelessness be and why? Mr. Myers?
So I thought I'd start off with a little, just a discussion and some about the concerns and things that have been expressed by the council and the steps that staff has gone through to develop the proposals and your options and the options that are there. First, back in September of 2018, 17, yes, July of 2017, Martin Boisey was decided by the Ninth Circuit Court and that began the process of discussion regarding homelessness in local communities. Basically, the court ruled and declared that an ordinance violates the Eighth Amendment insofar that as it imposes criminal sanctions against homelessness, homeless individuals for sleeping outdoors on public property when no alternative shelter is available to them. And that's on page 39 of the court ruling and that's the official ruling of Martin Boisey. That ruling then makes the Cottage Grove Municipal Code, the subsections 12.24, .020I and K unconstitutional. And so we're currently not enforcing those provisions that prohibit camping in our parks or prohibit people from being in the parks from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM. Those provisions need to be removed or amended to where they comply with that Ninth Circuit Court ruling.
Richard, could you please re-verse to us?
Those provisions? I says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to camp out or sleep in any park area at such time when the park is closed except by specific permission of the city manager or designee and only in areas designated for such purpose." K says, "It shall be unlawful for any person to enter or remain in any park or part thereof from 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, except as provided below," and that's for gathering of a special event or use of the park area at special times or in special uses or events which are authorized under section I of this section. And two, the following persons is when engaged in the course of their duties, city employees, law enforcement officers, fire, medical personnel, and those persons authorized by the city manager and/or city council. So those are the two sections. Section J in between them also refers to camping, but it talks about, it can be done with permits. So it doesn't say you can't do, you can't camp there. It's saying that you just need to have a permit to camp. So that doesn't really violate, but we probably will want to fix that. We have 270 acres, over 270 acres of parkland and open space that we have to manage and protect for the intended uses and the uses that have been developed, those parks or locations have been developed for. We also have a large amount of public property that's in right-of-ways, parking strips, parking lots, those kinds of things that are also public spaces that fall under that. In the note on page 66 in Martin Boisey, the justices state that nor do we see, do we suggest that a jurisdiction with insufficient shelter can never criminalize the act of sleeping outside. Even where shelter is unavailable, an ordinance prohibiting sitting, lying, or sleeping outside at particular time or in a particular location might, and they put an emphasis on "might" in their note, well be constitutionally permissible. Not a lot of guidance there on what "might" might be or what particular locations might be or particular time might be. There's a city in Oregon that tried to help clarify that a little bit and that was the city of Grants Pass. They passed some laws and did some ordinances to create some particular locations and times and other parks. And so they took care of helping... Yeah, I was gonna make you one so you could do that part. So their guidance and limitations came from, and this was a district court, and they basically ruled that the Eighth Amendment also prohibits cities from punishing homeless people for taking minimal measures to keep themselves warm and dry while sleeping when there are no alternative forms of shelter. What Grants Pass did was they passed an ordinance that said you couldn't carry sleeping bags, pillows, blankets, or you couldn't lay down a piece of cardboard or do things like that. And they also were enforcing and pushing people to go to the federal lands, BLM lands, or county parklands, or to the state rest area that is there nearby, by Medford, that's actually about 13 miles away from Medford. Blake also ruled that the alternative shelters, as described in Martin Boisey, would not include church-affiliated entities, federal BLM, Josephine Park County land, or state rest areas, or warming shelters. They declared that warming shelters do not suffice and meet the definition of alternative shelters. And that's based on their interpretation and reading of Martin Boisey. Blake also clarified that the Eighth Amendment prohibits cruel and unusual punishment, whether the punishment is designated as civil or criminal. Grants Pass had taken and paid and put some of the fines and the sanctions into the civil sector and made them small fines of $25 or something like that. And so the court ruled that, no, that's cruel and unusual punishment, you can't do that. Blake also explains that individuals who do not do, that do have access to adequate temporary shelter, whether they have the means to pay for it or because it is realistically available to them for free, but choose not to use it, can be subject to prohibitions to camping on public lands. So, and they set up the parameters that, hey, if there is shelter available and it's, meets those requirements, that it applies and allows for the prohibition of camping on public lands. As a result of those court cases, the legislature, our Oregon State Legislature stepped in to help provide some additional clarification and without getting too specific, they did provide a little bit additional clarification. And they basically said, "Any city law that regulates the act of sitting, lying, sleeping, or keeping warm and dry outdoors on public property that is open to the public must be objectively reasonable as to the time, place, and manner with regards to persons experiencing homelessness." So they set some parameters and they didn't clearly decide what objectively reasonable is, but you can set those regulations up. If it's not objectively reasonable, the city can be sued. And reasonableness shall be determined based on the totality of the circumstances, including, but not limited to the impact of the law on persons experiencing homelessness. So those are the things that set up our parameters, what we were looking at and how to address homelessness in Cottage Grove. As staff, we explored the options, we considered a wide range of information and input, we looked at the TACT report that Lane County did, the Lane County Shelter and Feasibility. We looked at the Oregon Community Foundation Report that Eco Northwest did. We looked at our own housing needs analysis. We looked at information from the League of Oregon Cities and we collected information from cities around the state, Coos Bay, Medford, Eugene, Springfield, Salem, other places like that. We gathered as much information as we could. Soon after had the ruling with Martin versus Boisey, I created and invited a number of various organizations from within the community, the principals of those organizations, the directors, to meet together and collaborate and coordinate and to discuss their services and the challenges that each of us were making and explore options. This group became known as the stakeholders and they met monthly to discuss the various organizations' needs and challenges and began to work together in addressing common community issues. It's important to note, and this is something that I just have to put out, this group is not a public meeting and it is not subject to the Public Meetings Law. It is not a governing body, nor does it create policy. These are all individuals who are the executive director or directors or leaders of organizations and answer to other boards or commissions that oversee their organization.
Counselor Solzky?
There are people that, from the school district, there's from the hospital, from Lane County, from South Lane Wheels, Community Sharing, South Lane Mental Health, Carry It Forward, Be Your Best, St. Vincent's Department, Square One Villages, Cottage Grove Coalition. So it's a group of individuals that are tied directly into providing those services. And we met and we discussed a lot of issues. We talked about youth, Looking Glass is also in there. We talked about youth homelessness, we talked about adult homelessness, we talked about mental health, we talked about emergency provisions for crisis management and mental health. We talked about a wide range of services and functions in the community. This is a service and a function that is designated, that the city manager is obligated to do under the charter, to meet with those organizations and other intergovernmental relations and to coordinate and work on those projects. And that's what we were doing. Experts from around the county were invited to come and talk as well about homelessness and/or other issues associated with that. We helped with grant writing for different organizations. And one of the successes was the Cottage Village Coalition was contemplating and not very interested in applying for a grant with the county. This group encouraged them and the group, members of the group actually provided support letters to support them in applying to the grant, which they then got, which threw them over the board, over the top, and they were able to finish their project. So it's been successful in that coordination and helpful. The information that was gathered from that group helped form and helped put together, helped staff evaluate the different ideas and options that are available. And so our options that we present and we've talked about through all of the different work sessions and town hall meetings are wide. And so we talked about the shelter options first and the alternative shelters since Martin Boisey says you can't, you can't regulate, you can't do this and hold people for criminal sanctions if there's no alternative shelter. What will the shelter types or functions be? So the first option is you don't do any alternative shelter. That is an option. You don't do anything. That's an option. Eventually, July 1st, 2023, if you do nothing at all, you will be in violation of state law and can be sued, period, because we have laws on the books. And so the completely doing nothing option is going to cost you money because even if you're not enforcing the laws and they're on the books, according to state law in 3115, you can be sued. There is also the option of no shelter and that would significantly reduce the ability to establish any objectively reasonable time, place, and manner restrictions. If you're not providing an alternative shelter of some kind, or there's not one provided in the community, it meets the definitions that are in those court cases, then your ability to limit what goes on on your public lands is greatly restricted. It would also eliminate our ability to manage the use of our public spaces and it would do nothing to help resolve or correct or take care of or mitigate homelessness in Cottage Grove. Another option, and this is one we actually talked about in the group and we tried to evaluate and look at, is unmanaged tent camping, providing a location for people to go and set up tents. And it's sort of what Sutherland is doing. They've opened up this place. It's what happened under the Washington Street Bridge and other places in Eugene. It doesn't turn out very well. It's the cheap alternative. You end up with a lot of waste in materials. You end up with tents and ragged tarps and all kinds of other things. Drug and alcohol use is rampant, crimes are going on there, there's no accountability, there's no case management, no goals are set, no training or counseling or mental health care is provided, but it is cheap until you decommission the site and have to clean it up. That's where it gets expensive. Another option, and this is one of the ones that I was initially looking at, but as we met with the groups and explored further, the dusk-to-dawn alternative. This is similar to the warming shelters, but it would be on a year-round, every day, every night basis where an organization would run a dusk-to-dawn camp. And so at dawn, at dusk, sometime in the evening, usually seven or six o'clock or something like that, you'd open the dusk-to-dawn, people would go in, check in, and you could either have a dusk-to-dawn, which they bring their own tents and set up their own tents, or you have shelters that are provided, or it could be a congregant facility as well. And they would be there, they'd sleep, and they'd get up in the morning, there might be some food and snacks there, but, and some hand washing and restroom facilities, but that's about it. They would sleep, they would get up in the morning at dawn, usually be waking up about six o'clock and they'd be out of there by seven or eight o'clock in the morning. There's no opportunity for case management. You see them once, when they come in, they go to their space, they sleep, they get up in the morning and leave. There's no training, there's no counseling, there's no mental health or healthcare services provided. There would be rules for the site, just like the warming shelter site, there'd be rules. Participants would be coming to the site every day. You'd have the traffic of the homeless individuals going to the site every night and returning in the morning. Other places that have the dusk-to-dawn facilities, you'd usually end up with a large congregation of homeless individuals hanging around the site throughout the day, primarily in the afternoon and evening, you start getting a line of people waiting to get in. And that's what I've seen and experienced in Medford and other locations is, yeah, you get people waiting, they're hanging around because they don't have anywhere to go. It would provide shelter for homeless at night, when no one's in the parks or using the parks. And then you'd be putting them out of the shelter in the morning and they'd have to be going somewhere. They can't be at the shelter, they'd have to go somewhere. Some of them hang around the site, a lot of them will go to the parks. And that's the time when others are using the parks for the intended uses. They'll go to the library. The library is a very popular place for those experiencing homeless to spend time at, throughout the day, if you're providing a dusk-to-dawn facility. The next one was a dawn-to-dawn. That's the 24/7 emergency facility, shelter facility. There's a variety of services that can be provided in a dawn-to-dawn. That's what life is, our life is, from dawn to dawn. But they'd be a period. A variety of services could be there. There could be some food storage, there could be places for them to store their own food so they don't have to buy ready-made food all the time. They could have food stored there, there could be some food service there. There could be laundry facilities there, there could be showers. There could also be rooms available for counseling and training and case management. The opportunity is there for supervision. There's also opportunities for community service and doing things within the sheltering facility as well. Rules that would be established would prohibit violent, abusive, or other behaviors similar to the warming shelters, establish quiet times, restrict the volume of possessions that are there, prohibit drug and alcohol use or possession, and a variety of other things could be there as a result in the dawn-to-dawn. The 24-hour service would also provide shelter during the day, keeping the individuals from having to go to the library or the other parks. They could be there at that facility and participate in some of those opportunities to improve and to move forward and get out of the homeless cycle that they're in. It allows for the coordination of multiple service providers, so others could be there. You could be partnering with community sharing, you could be partnering with South Lane Mental Health, you could be partnering with all the other providers, even the hospital could be providing some medical services to help them there at that location. Another type of dawn-to-dawn facility is a navigation center. This is usually a little larger than a typical dawn-to-dawn facility and it has the opportunity for more multiple providers at the site, but basically it's the same as a dawn-to-dawn facility. The other option is rely on volunteers or charitable organizations or religious organizations. Number one, religious organizations, if they're running the shelter, it may not meet the definitions and requirements as an alternative shelter under Blake versus Grants Pass, especially if they have some specific guidelines or requirements associated with attending religious services or meeting certain requirements that are there at that shelter. They'd also, the charitable organizations and nonprofits, they do not have the resources to cover and to manage and to run 24/7 facility. We've visited with a number of the members of the local religious organizations in the community to see if we could find a way to get some kind of activity or function going. Their biggest fear is they don't have volunteers that have the expertise on how to handle the mental health issues and how to deal with individuals that are in the crisis and the trauma situations that these individuals are in. There's a wide range of issues and varieties that take some definite training and expertise in order to better take and handle and get these individuals back out of the trauma and the crisis that they're in. We've looked at time, place, and manner and we've suggested some of those opportunities to regulate our right-of-ways, to prevent parking in, to prevent camping, sleeping, lying, resting, whatever, in the right-of-ways, in the bike lanes, in the planting strips around the sidewalks. We've talked about doing some priorities for parks and managing those. One of the obligations or requirements associated with doing the regulations on time, place, and manner is the time, place, and manner is very contingent on what you do for sheltering. If you do no sheltering, your time, place, and manner is going to be very minimal that you can do and legally get away with. If you do some significant sheltering and meet the needs for an alternative shelter, your time, place, and manner can be much more restrictive on your public spaces.
Richard, what do you mean by that? Because like I got very conflicting, I just want to be honest on this. Like let's really lay out the law. I mean, if we're really gonna do a work session, we need to be very honest about what the law is. And I'm not saying we shouldn't do homeless shelter, I'm just saying, don't put us under this pressure that we have to. And so, I mean...
It's not that you have to. I'm saying that if you don't, your restrictions on the use of public spaces will be considerably different than if you do.
Well, yes.
Because you cannot, you will not be able to restrict the use of your public spaces if you're not providing alternative shelter in the way that you would if you had an alternative shelter.
But that's not the way I understand it. The way I read the law, and I cannot get a definitive answer from our attorneys, is that if we say, we, and carry a study, like we can say that not to say which camps people can't park in, can't camp in, but which parks, no, which parks they can camp in, we just have to say which parts they cannot camp in. So I just don't want to be under the gun as far as like it's an emergency, we have to do this now. I would rather like really do it right if we're going to do it, ask all the right questions, get down to the brass tacks of everything and not be feeling like we have to make a decision tonight.
Well, you can't make one tonight.
And what?
You can't make one.
No, I know, but you know...
But what I'm saying, what we're saying is if you have alternative shelter and it meets the requirements of the cases, then you could prohibit camping in the parks, period.
We can prohibit...
All the parks.
All the parks.
Yes.
If you do not have an alternative shelter, then your restrictions on parks are going to be limited. You might be able to say, yeah, this park, this park, but they're going to look at that in the court and they're going to say, okay, but those are full or those are being used for...
That's not happening with Grants Pass.
Well, Grants Pass had a whole separate stuff in there, too.
Yeah, but that's not happening with Grants Pass. Grants Pass actually won their case.
No, they didn't. They lost.
Well, they lost in respect to read it. Read what they said.
They say, "The, in the opinion and order, for the reasons below, plaintiffs," and the plaintiffs are Blake, Johnson, Logan, summary, the motion for summary judgment is granted. That means they've won.
Okay, but just read what...
In part, and in part denied. The things that were denied were their standing and were, they were technical issues associated with the court case. The defendant's motion for summary judgment is plain out denied. That's Grants Pass.
What was the conclusion?
The conclusion of the Grants Pass case, and I read that earlier, holds that, I'll find it here because I wrote it in here. "The Eighth Amendment also prohibits a city from punishing homeless people for taking minimal measures to keep themselves warm, dry, while sleeping when there is no alternative shelter available." Grants Pass passed laws saying you can't carry a blanket, you can't carry a pillow, you can't bring those things into the park.
It's not...
They also, they were also on the record in their minutes in the council meetings as saying they wanted to make it as difficult as possible to move people out of the community, which that was down.
That's not what happened.
They also ruled that an alternative shelter does not include the church-affiliated entities, that it does not include federal BLM, Josephine County land, or the state rest stops, and that it did not include warming shelters.
Read the rest.
And then they also said that the Eighth Amendment prohibits cruel and unusual punishment, where the punishment is designated either as civil or criminal. So they changed their ordinance to say, yeah, it's not a criminal charge, we're doing it as civil, so it's only going to be $25 or $10. You still can't do that. And then they went on and said, "Individuals who do not, that do have access to adequate temporary shelter, whether they have means to pay for it or because it is realistically available to them for free, but choose not to use it, can be subject to prohibition on camping on public lands."
Read the rest.
Yeah, the, they went, they also said that they're not, just like Martin, that they're not saying local government cannot issue some kind of restrictions, but they're saying that you've got to be careful. You have to meet these criteria and they have to be reasonable.
Read what it says.
Yeah, so just like Martin, this holding in no way dictates to local government that it must provide sufficient shelter for the homeless or allow anyone who wishes to to sit by and sleep on any street at any time or any place. So you can do some regulations. Then you have House Bill 3115 that's saying, hey, they have to be objectively reasonable. And what objectively reasonable means that it has to have that be determined on a basis of totality of circumstances, including but not limited to the impact of the law on persons experiencing homelessness. So you read further in Martin and in Grants Pass and Blake, and the court even goes on and they actually expand on what they're saying there. And they say, "Uprunning homeless individuals without providing them the basic sanitation and waste disposal needs does nothing more than shift the public health crisis from one location to another, potentially endangering the health and public in both locations." They tell the court, the court tells Grants Pass to work with local homeless services and experts to establish programs to help them. And they say the quality of life laws and the enforcement of quality life laws, the no camping, no using blankets, not those kinds of things that Grants Pass did to cure the homeless crisis. Indeed, enforcement of such quality of life laws do nothing to cure the homeless crisis in this country. Arresting the homeless is almost never an adequate solution because apart from the constitutional impediments, it is expensive, not rehabilitating, and often a waste of limited public resources and does nothing to serve those homeless individuals who suffer from mental illness and substance abuse and addiction. They go on and they said, "The court reminds governing bodies of the importance of empathy and thinking outside the box. We must try harder to protect our most vulnerable citizens. Let us not forget that the homeless individuals are citizens just as much as those fortunate..." Let us not forget that the homeless individuals are citizens just as much as those fortunate enough to have a secure living space. With the justices putting this kind of stuff in their ruling, it helps put more meaning to some of the things that they say in talking about, oh, you've gotta be careful, I mean, here's what we're saying. You can do some regulations, but these factors are pieces that will guide what those regulations can do. And the more and more that you do without providing the sheltering or without meeting the totality, the more likely you're gonna violate Blake and 3115 and Martin.
Mr. Byers, is there a definition difference right now when we're talking about shelter and providing an available space, whether it be unmanaged?
No, there isn't. I mean, an alternative shelter can be, and that's why those options are, hey, you could, you could take a piece of property and say, hey, input tents on that and stay on that, and it's completely and totally unmanaged. But, you know, we've seen, we've seen what happens under Washington Street Bridge. I mean, an unmanaged facility is doomed to failure. You're going to have disasters, you're gonna have deaths, you're gonna have injuries, you're gonna have assaults, you're gonna have crime, and then cleanup is bringing in a backhoe and scooping off the top six inches of soil and replacing. I mean, that's what happens.
Now, back to what Counselor Soulsby brought up, is I think that it's the same, I think her interpretation and mine's the same, that we can't say Bohemia Park and Corneille Park, we don't want camping there, and that's, and put that, and we're still within the law.
Right.
Correct.
Yeah.
Grant's Pass went too far.
Right.
Right.
And that's what I'm trying to say, is you can't compare us to Grant's Pass. We're not trying to do that.
We're not comparing, we're saying, here's what the court gave us some additional things to look at as we look at what kind of group...
What Grant's Pass said is basically, that judge said, you are criminalizing someone for putting a piece of cardboard down to lay down on the ground. That is what they said, and that is wrong. And so it is that that we're looking at. It's not that we don't want to do anything.
Right.
It's that we are here right now to work on it, and we're looking at different models right now, is how I feel, that we have not had the opportunity to do that with yet. We have a couple of different models that, well, we haven't even really been involved in this conversation as far as different models to look at. And that's what's been hard for us to vote on as a council, is that, I mean, for me, what I've said from day one is, like, I've gotten out there and I've talked to the people experiencing homelessness in our community, and I have spoke to them one-on-one, and I know what they are dealing with and their challenges, and I do want to get them help. But I think it should be a community model for our community, not what is working for Eugene or not working for Eugene, or working for Salem, not working for Salem. We're different, we are Cottage Grove. And so if we can work and figure out what's good for our people, that's what I feel like this work session should have always been about, and that's what I was saying from day one that I wanted, was a work session. I wasn't trying to delay this process, I wasn't trying to keep it from happening, and, you know, and I've been villainized a little bit, and that's a little bit heartbreaking to me because I grew up in this town, and this town is my heart, and I know some of those people out there, and I want what's good for them, but involve us in some way so that we know what it is that we're actually voting on. We don't know what we're voting on. It's like, oh, let's just vote a homeless camp through and have low barrier and, you know, it's like, what does low barrier even mean? I've been asking that question from day one, and I feel like I have still no answers to that, and I've said it, I've been pleading to people, you know, on what exactly does that mean, and let's, let's get to the heart of it, let's, let's weigh apples to apples, let's look at different homeless camps that are working in different communities, let's, you know, let's take that into account of what could work for Cottage Grove. You know, there's, you know, there's things that are happening in San Diego and LA, there's things that are happening in Texas, there's things that are happening in Ashland right now, you know, there's a lot of really good things that are going on that we could do in this community, and I want us to do something good. I want us to create something good, but I just don't want to throw money at it.
I'm echoing that, and that's what I've been saying. Do something different and bold, something that fits our community, so that it benefits our community. I want to do something. I'm very attached to this. I mean, I just recently quit my real job, so that whatever we decide to do, I'm planning on volunteering. This means a lot to me.
And I'll let you know, the proposal that we put together is not something that anyone else is doing. That is something that's been prepared, and that's why I made that proposal as a draft. Here's what we're suggesting, here's what we've researched that would work for this community. No one else is doing what we're doing, or what we propose to do, in creating a shelter site that would be using pallet shelters and providing a place for counseling and management and trainings that could go on, as well as providing opportunities for them to do community service and do things for the community, bring them back in. In addition to that, we were originally, and we talked about this from, yeah, go to, we were doing a second step. We've kind of taken that out for the time being, just because there's a crisis of getting care, taking care of the immediate issue that's happening, and then doing something on the other end in housing. That's the full package, and people aren't doing that. Other communities are simply doing a shelter, or they're opening up a space for people to go camp. That does nothing to mitigate and to try to control what's going on. That's what this proposal was created. It's wide open. I mean, we gave you, here's the other alternatives, you can do nothing, you can, you can create a don-to-don, we talked about those. We have given the definition of low barrier. I don't understand what you need to know about it. A low barrier is simply a facility that has an easy access for individuals to get in and use the facility. That's what it means. It's not no barrier, which would be your tents going into the field and having a free-for-all with everything. This is creating a place for people to go, where it's safe, there's rules. The warming shelters are an excellent example of low barrier. That's what they are.
But it allows drugs and drinking, doesn't it?
No, it does not.
Okay.
And neither does this. This was in, I mean, we gave you the RFP, people, and the RFP had it in bold, no drugs or alcohol are permitted or used on the facility.
Have you had any drug overdoses at the warming shelter?
At the warming shelter? No.
Yes, you have.
Not at the warming shelter.
You did not have a drug overdose at the warming shelter, did you have a drug overdose over here?
We had an individual that came over and had a drug overdose. They were not from the site.
But you had no drug overdoses at the warming shelter? Have you ever found drug paraphernalia?
At the warming shelter is the site behind the post office.
I know. Have you had, have you found drug paraphernalia?
They found it, and it was confiscated, and the person was kicked out of the facility.
So, if I might jump in, I've been trying to not speak because I do really want to listen. I mean, I really value what your guys' concerns are, but, but our agency ran the warming shelter the last two years, and we ran it as low barrier as defined by Lane County, and they stipulated that, and so I do have some knowledge of what low barrier. I don't have the experience that other agencies that do full-time shelters do, but low barrier means you take people as they are, but you certainly do not allow drugs. We did not have any overdoses. The community central was not managed, except during the day. This was, this is not what we're talking about.
How do you know there's no drugs? There's no drug testing, there's nothing to get...
There's, there's no drug testing in a low-barrier shelter. We actually had people, you know, showing us their bags coming in, we had people... Am I saying that it was 100%? I have no idea, but we did our due diligence to make sure that folks were behaving. So this is the thing, it wasn't about whether they were inebriated or not, it was about their behavior. If they were unable to behave themselves, I threw them out. For there were folks who were given anywhere from a day to several-day suspensions or permanent, I think we had two, that ended up with permanent suspensions for behaviors. And so that's what we're looking at, is behaviors. Now, we weren't doing any case management, we weren't trying to work on those things other than to keep people warm. But a barrier could be if you have a pet, and so the shelters, the shelters were opportu, you know, they were great because in the congregate settings that were under Bed-Streits and Nights, they were in a congregate setting, they could not have animals. So we were lower barrier because they could have animals. So saying low barrier doesn't mean that it's a free-for-all, that people can do anything they want. I mean, gosh, anybody who knows me and community sharing knows I do not suffer bad behaviors.
You did a great job.
And one of the other pieces, too, is couples or family members could be together as well, and that's in Bed-Streits and Nights, you couldn't, but a low barrier, you can do that. And that's, those are some of those pieces that help, it helps stabilize, it helps get them to a point where you can actually do something and move forward.
I don't think anyone here has a problem with that.
Yeah.
Like, for me, it's honestly getting people so that they are not in this position five years from now, 10 years from now.
Right. And that's the sole purpose behind the low-barrier facility, is you're going to be, and working, and the RFP specifically spelled that out, saying, hey, we want to be moving in a direction to get them into some kind of permanent housing, away from here and out of the shelters, into low-income housing or supported permanent housing somewhere else. Right now, there isn't any, and so that's kind of a dream, but it's, it's trying to get them ready to be on their own in some other housing. That is the purpose of the 24-hour, what we were trying to do in the shelter facility with. That's some of the differences that we had in our proposal. We don't want to be treating a symptom. We want to be treating the cause, and the cause is, we need to get them ready to be back into regular housing, and that's the number-one reason to try to get them stabilized. Then we can start addressing the mental health issues and the addiction issues and those other things to get them into those places where they're ready to care for themselves.
So then how is that going to be dealt? I'm staying in a pallet shelter, and I get caught once or twice. Is it 30 days? Is that something that we can decide?
It depends on what you're caught for, and those are things that we will have the opportunity as we sit down and, remember, you are a city council, you deal with policy, you don't deal with the nitty-gritty, day-to-day administrative functions. You have case managers, you have caseworkers, you have professionals there that have expertise on how to deal with individuals and what rule may apply to one. They need to be kind of adjusted for somebody else, and depending on those situations, and I would leave that for the provider. So don't get into those rules, but yes, they will be kicked out if they continue to violate those rules. And however they set that up, that's part of the proposal that they give back to us, is what are their procedure, what are their rules, and what are they going to be doing specifically in the administration? You need to focus on policy and how that policy works, what are some of those key pieces of the policy, how accountable do you really want them to be, and set the broad range where they then enforce and take care of the rules. And that's why you have a parameter after a year or two years or whatever to evaluate. Did you meet what we were saying? Did you follow the policy that we set up?
Well, I do agree with that. I think the policy we're deciding on right now is the model. What do you want to put in effect? Is it a housing first? Is it a community first? What model? Have we all looked at all those different models? Have we really analyzed and looked at, like, the contrast between the two? Do we want to have a real community involvement with some nonprofits with, and the Grant's Pass case, they were, the reason why that didn't qualify is that they would make them sit in on church services. And so you could actually have churches helping out, I mean, as long as it was not, I mean, just using the property, as long as it was not making them sit in on church services or, you know, not putting their religious beliefs on those people, and it's just a community getting behind, and honestly, that's what I support more than anything, is the community getting behind this.
So then my question would be, how many of the quote stakeholders are going to get their feet wet in this show?
A number of them are very interested in participating in their roles or their functions in the shelter facility. There will be coordination, and the providers will coordinate with those different organizations. They'll coordinate with the hospital, they'll coordinate with Southland Mental Health, they'll coordinate with the police department in the city, and so that they're familiar. One of the things with, that we've talked about with one of the providers is even having, they would like to have a liaison from the police department that's regularly there on a regular, you know, not daily because there's shifts...
Like a community service officer.
Or a regular officer that's there and has a relationship with their staff and their individuals. And there's going to be opportunities for church groups to be a part of it. I mean, we're building the, basically, the facility, and then leasing that out to a nonprofit or somebody to do it. There's going to be more things. Typically, you see in other facilities where they have some kind of sheltering, where they're doing a pallet shelter thing, they'll paint them or they'll color them. There's no curtains, and, you know, curtains and blankets could be things that churches and stuff could participate in. Right now, and this is one of the things that is reality in the community, is our religious organizations are suffering terribly as a result of COVID-19. I mean, the COVID pandemic has really hurt congregations in this community where their fundraising and their volunteer network is down.
Gone.
People stopped coming, and they're watching at home, and all those kinds of things. So there's some challenges associated with some of that that we're gonna have to face, but we do have a commitment from a couple of churches that they are very interested in helping.
Meals is another one.
And Meals, you know, the ones who do Meals, getting those meals delivered to the site rather than having the residents have to go somewhere and do it. We have an organization, we actually have one of the organizations that's interested in doing garden boxes, so that there'd be garden boxes out in front of each shelter. So it will be a community-based function, and, you know, there again, we're moving into some of the minutia. If we can stick to the policy that, yes, we want to do something, and we want to provide an alternative shelter, and we want the community to be involved in helping, we need to have a third party. There's nobody in this community, no organization that currently exists, even community sharing, that is capable of managing a shelter.
Well, we need someone with experience for this.
Exactly. And we need somebody with the experience, we need somebody with the certifications and all of that to be able to manage it properly, and that's what we're seeking, and they would be working closely with the community, and they have a commitment to do that.
I don't remember in the RFP, but I know the ones that I fill out for the county, networking and referrals is required in that, and so one of the examples I could see are community sharing partnering with whoever ends up with that RFP, is we have a program called HTBA, which is Home Tenant Based Assistance. It's a HUD program for rural communities to get homeless folks back into housing, and we don't have a very good success rate in that because of the challenges that our little agency are not able to address with the funding that we have. And so in partnering, well, and there's another huge problem, there aren't available units that'll pass a HUD inspection, which is another huge problem for that program. So that's where the MUPD and getting more units, and then when we have available units, we get folks started on that path, and then they can move into this program, which is case-managed for anywhere from a year that can be established for a second year. So that's one thing. I mean, mobile pantry services are things we're talking about, there's all sorts of ways. And so my contracts, our contracts also require us to do that, as I'm assuming many of the other agencies would, too. So that is gonna be a given because of the expectations of all of our other funding. So I think that that's not gonna be a big concern.
And to explain a little bit more what Housing First is, Housing First is simply a process that, it simply means that one of the top priorities, the main thing they're going to be trying to address, is getting people ready to be back housed. That's, that's the purpose of it. It means nothing more than that. They're, they're going to be addressing the mental health, they're going to be addressing the addiction, they're going to be addressing the physical and health issues that are there to get them ready to be in a house, whether it's a studio, whether it's a tiny home, whether it's a permanent supportive housing, something else that they're going to be getting them on the list and getting them moving out into that. That's the sole purpose of the Housing First model. And, you know, when we start talking about the community model or the community first of all, that's all part of it. It's, it's going to take the community to be a part of helping this work, and, and those pieces are there as we start putting it together, and groups and individuals will be able to volunteer and coordinate and work. They're always looking for additional volunteers to help at the facilities and do that. I mean, that's a piece of it.
I was listening to Candy, and she was frustrated with supplement health, but how long... I was listening to Candy and the, I was frustrated with something about how long the waiting list is to get them to see. And I was listening to, sorry, and I was listening to another documentary the other day that they were talking about, they used a word that I had never heard before. I heard comomorbidity over and over, but I've never heard tri-morbidity. And that they're referring to as drug addiction, mental health issues and PTSD. And they said, in this statistic, it said 50% of homeless people are suffering from a tri-morbidity. And so I am very afraid that we are going to do a homeless camp that we cannot with our, what we have available to us in this town fix as far as unless our community gets involved. And that's why, did, did you guys get the, the Community Strong? And so that model, what I, I have to say I liked about that model was that they're separating the camps. And I do have to say there's something to that as far as like, there's other options that we can think about as far as like two, one to two to three little shelters on maybe church parking lots that, and then getting grants for the churches possibly to do shower enclosures and having that community rally around one, two or three people to give them help. And I like that idea. And I also like because knowing, having friends that have had drug addictions in the past and family, knowing that sometimes the separation from a community where there's a lot of drug use is sometimes a good thing. And so I, I just, I, I've just been like kind of thinking out of the box on this and thinking, you know, first thought I thought, no, that, that's not a good idea. And then I got to thinking about it and I was like, you know, maybe that would work, especially in a small community where it's not like we have, you know, thousands of homeless, you know, and we have 30 churches in this community. And so it's, it's something to give some thought to, you know, instead of just diving right into this and maybe doing the pallet shelters that way.
And we, we, that was a part of the proposal. And we had 33 pallet shelters, that's all we had. And there are 188 homeless individuals according to the January. I think the April number was 181 homeless in the community. The pallet shelters are probably going to fill. And part of the original proposal was that we would be making some amendments and some changes to our code to authorize RVs or camping on private property in residences or churches or businesses. They could have up to two or three, or depending on if they wanted to go into a full transitional housing, they could even have more than that. But you could do that and have those opportunities. So that's a part of the proposal that was originally presented and actually presented as well at the town hall. It's exactly a piece. That's where you get the community buy-in. But there are individuals out there that do require a little bit more specialized care that are not really going to be good for people to have in their yard. I mean, that's, or in the driveway or in the church parking lot. I mean, those are some things that probably would not be the best location. But there are others that that would work for. That was why that was all part of that package. That package included that in the original proposal.
You know, you, we keep using this number of 180 plus floating out there. A majority of the homeless that I have talked to said that if we did the 99 site, they would not come there. So what, what, what happens with those people?
And, and if you remember from Blake, if you have that shelter and they don't go, they can be cited. They have to, you know, if we create a proposal, and this is one of the things that we were trying to do in the proposal, and this is the totality of impact again. If you put together a proposal, you've got a shelter facility, you've got some restrictions, you can't be in certain places, you've got opportunities for people to put them on churches or in private land or in private driveways or in their backyard. You've created a totality there that if somebody decides to sue us because we, we arrested them or cited them because they were on public property and we had room at the shelter, the judge is going to look at that and say, I don't care if you didn't want to go. They had it. And that's what they'll say.
So I'd like a little more clarification on where the line of religious affiliation, church property. It seems like that's a really pivotal point, especially as it would be ruled out in the case. They're deciding that. Do you have a source of clarity for that or something you can point us to? Would it be so much as if it was on the church property, but it wasn't requiring anything? Would that not work? Carrie, Carrie?
Yeah, Carrie just popped on, so I think we'll let her answer that. I probably could, but I'll let, let Carrie answer.
Richard, you've just been doing an amazing job. There's really not a lot I can add, but I did just think I may as well chine in on this question because the, the objectionable element of the religious aspect isn't a location on, you know, church-owned property. It's whether or not before they can access services, food, sanitation or shelter, do they have to conduct services? Do they have to be a part of services? Do they have to recite prayers? So that's the, that's the aspect that's objectionable in the case law.
And, and then under, I think it was Boise, there was also a really short time limit on how long you could be there as well. So they had a really short time limit that you were free to be there, but then after the 12 days or 10 days or something like that, you had to go to a service too. So in order to be, to extend the time for another 10 or something. So it's, I mean, those are some of the criteria that are there, but you know, as Counselor Solzby said, yeah, if they're there on the property and there's nothing tied to it, yeah, that doesn't apply.
So we, there, there could be a model where we have a distributed network of, say even these city-owned pallet shelters that are allowed to be set up. If we had groups that would volunteer to, to do that, and that would effectively get us in the same place. It wouldn't necessarily legally as we would with a pallet shelter. Now you still have the managed, management issue of it. But that may not be a one-to-one comparison, but could be addressed with that, you know, local groups coming around. Something along those lines. My, my hangup has been that we haven't tried to lean, we're in a different place, I think, from 2018 when this, where we're looking at this. The issue wasn't, hadn't risen to the, to the consciousness of, you know, your average person that would never watch a council meeting. And now it has. And so my proclivity is to say, let's, I would prefer to try to lean on the community first. We can certainly as a, a city prevent ourselves legal hazards based on the code. And, and we could be more of a facilitator role than a line, like a cap, big capital outlet in the line, budget line item. That's, I guess if I had to really distill down the position on that, that's, that's where I am. And then if, if this just doesn't pan out, it doesn't work and we're having more problems, then okay, maybe it's, maybe it's time. So that's as far as policies that we, that's kind of where I've come to assist us to prepare. The position and then why.
So you're saying, uh, take the pallet shelters, hand them out to the stakeholders and let them run them?
Well, I'd like to see the organization first of, and to the community conversation saying who, who wants, who can, who wants to step up to this and say, and then the city serve, like I said, as a facilitator, as a resource, as a resource provider, but not, but not as a, not as a regular necessarily budget item or a major portion of corporate funds. Something that give, give the, the people here a chance to fill that role of societal help, of, of, of social help before we step in as a city and take that on. And if it fails, then I'm happy to have a, the city role conversation.
You know, the discussions that I've had with members of the Ministerial Association is not really an association, but they, the group is they don't have the resources to do that or the wherewithal within their congregation to support shelters on their sites. But they have portions of their congregation and their congregation's ability to address items like curtains and, and flower boxes and food or doing those things that they can do on a scheduled basis rather than having something that they have to take care of and manage daily.
And I, I guess that makes me curious about what, what subset have you engaged with? What periods of time? And I tend to think there's a large population that is, has gone untapped.
Yeah. And, and the, you know, looking at a couple of the organizations, a couple of the, the congregations, they really don't have much of a parking lot because it's an older facility. And so there's some physical limitations as well. But I, I think you'd see that across the board on most of those organizations that you're not going to see a, a desire to do something on their site specifically.
I, I like your idea. That's, my concern is that how would you get the services that would go beyond, you know, the, the mental health and all that through? If you had like three pallet shelters at the Catholic Church, how would they get those resources and get them to, to work towards not being homeless?
I don't have a perfect answer to that, but, but it'd be one of the, willing to help, work together to develop. But I think something to do with the availability of information just as you go in town, even that concept of the reader boards with soliciting, you know, video kind of presentations with subtext about all the organizations that exist that are service providers in the area where somebody could, you know, stand in front of a reader board. Let's say it loops through a half hour and you would have a synopsis of everything that's available for you with the hours, with, with numbers, with all of that. With, you know, some of the things I've listed down, like that's part of the facilitator roles or maybe there's lockable storage areas distributed around town. Maybe we do invest in more infrastructure that can be used by the entire community, including the homeless population, additional bathrooms, maybe more resources so that there's a general available network of, of the things that we're lacking right now. And then, well, so I don't know if that answers the question, but there, more information would, would at least alleviate that, that issue.
Yeah, it's just that the average person that attends the church and is, you know, they, they help with the, the meals and that kind of stuff, they're not a counselor. So, you know, how are you going to get that counseling resource to them? And so, you know, and if they're spread out over, you know, we've got 33 pallet shelters, if we've got them over 11 different churches.
Makes it harder on the.
That's whoever is, you know, if you go get somebody to try to do that, we already know something, mental health is strapped on personnel, so.
To make 11 house calls.
I understand. I think it'd be impossible to, to guarantee any kind of uniform in the service across this. Various groups too over the time. It's not taking away from anyone who's alone, who wants to, feels as though they have anything. This is, this is an intensive process that most of us in this community are not prepared to, to handle or manage a level of time. I believe in Housing First because it's direct and solves the problem. We're talking about homelessness, the lack of shelter, and what cures that? Well, shelter. Avoiding the, you know, the minutia, the day-to-day of the operation of this, this program, I think it is really simple. We have to have an alternative or we're going to have folks in parks. I mean, imagine the conflict between a homeowner and someone who feels they have the right to camp in the parking strip out in front of their place. Disasters. I believe our staff and council will tell us we have to provide an alternative. And I think it is that simple. After we take the first step and we take the second and the third and the fourth, which is engaging our three-day partners to takeovers to find, you know, what, what we want to do and what we're willing to do and able to do to address the root causes after we fix the immediate crisis, which is the lack of shelter.
Well, here's the deal. There's no housing. So what we have to work on right now is to do the MUPDs and the LUPDs and we have to do all that. Just because we do a shelter doesn't mean that they're going to get into a permanent housing. And so I do think. I'm sorry? So, so what we're looking at right now is some different models. And that's what I don't want to get stuck in, is that it's just one way and it's simple. It's not, it, there's a lot of different variables going on. It's not just a simple lack of housing. There's a lot of other reasons why people are homeless. There's mental health, there is PTSD, there is drug addiction and, and we've learned that. You know, that's that tri-morbidity. It's that 50% of homeless people have. And so we have to address that. And so that once they get into housing, that they're stable. And so that they don't have problems with their neighbors, so the police aren't called, they're not kicked out of their house once they get in. And so we have to address all those things all at the same time. And I think that would be great if we could do it all at once. And so, and if there's some buy-in from the people so that it's, because here's, here's the problem I have is seeing, seeing, you know, I hear the sirens and it's really awful when I hear someone's been Narcaned and, you know, three times or two times. And, and that, that they're telling me that they're carrying Narcan right now and I see the signs now for, you know, don't, you know, it's, it's okay. Just do drugs safe and carry Narcan and take turns doing it so that you can watch each other. That's not okay. These are our citizens. We've got to, we've got to help them. And so that is a serious problem. And so it's, yeah, housing is a problem. We're not going to solve it overnight. It's, we have to do a lot of stuff. And I think we should be investing in transitional housing. There's a lot of stuff that we can do as far as low-income housing. We need to help with the permitting process to attract builders here. There's, there's a lot of stuff we can do and it's not going to happen overnight. Our, our main thing right now is to keep people alive so that we can get them into a house. And so for me, if we can get the community to rally behind something right now, that's the most important thing. And, and we, I think we should look at all options. And there are community groups out there right now that are working on things. And why not let them present, present to us like options that they have? And, and let, and, and we should see the other side. We should see the Housing First model. We haven't, they've never come and really presented to us to show us what they can do. We've been asking for it, but I haven't seen it. So, you know, why not? Why aren't we having that? I mean, these, these are questions that we as a city council should be asking. It's our due diligence. We should be asking those questions. So I, that's my two cents. I got something to say, Richard.
So, so that actually, I mean, really sums up what we are doing. And this is just one piece of the puzzle. And, and this, I, I, I fully support all of the proposed mechanisms because it's not going to be one answer. I know the folks who've overdosed and, and it breaks my heart as well. But these folks, I have to tell you, you know, one, we were talking about church organizations just running the warming shelter exhausted me. A guy who does this all the time. I mean, I've worked with the unhoused every day and I was just absolutely exhausted. And it's not just the hours, it's also the emotional drain that it puts on you. And I have been so impressed. Obviously I only have experience with a few providers, but with the folks I've spoken with and their ability to address those concerns. And so this is that option to work with folks, you know, towards, you know, getting themselves in a better place. Cause I do believe that the drug, you know, the drug problem is a symptom and it's from hopelessness. And I know that you guys have talked to the unhoused, but I do too. And I know that our warming shelter was near capacity or at capacity almost every night that it operated. So I do know that there's need out there for, for folks. The Housing First model, I mean, gosh, I've been reading about this for a decade. And the idea is to get somebody stable and safe because for, and you mentioned PTSD and that's, that's exactly what the problem is. If you're out on the street and your fight and flight, fight or flight mechanism is what's driving everyday decisions, it's about, you know, where's my next meal? it's about, you know, where's my next meal? How do I stay warm? How do I not be beaten up for the, you know, tent that I have or the sleeping bag that I have? If you provide that stable environment, people can start working on those issues. The PTSD is addressed because they're now in a safe place where they can work through those problems. Once again, I've tried to say through this whole process, this will not be the silver bullet. It'll be just one piece. We will need the community to step up. And I think the churches can have a huge impact. As an example, Catholic Community Services, so our agency is one of four community service centers in the county. Catholic Community Services runs both the Eugene and Springfield ones, so it certainly can be done. It just has to be done. And I don't want to speak for them, but but where their services do not require proselytization, I mean, where they do not have to go through, you know, any sort of hoops to receive those services. So it certainly can happen and I think churches are a great resource. I think service clubs are a great resource. Absolutely friends and family are a great opportunity as well. But but the resources are the huge problem. All of those pallet shelters, I mean, look at the cost we had putting in electricity and and the bucks and all of the things just for the warming shelter. I mean, it's a huge cost that, as Richard said, I mean, gosh, every week at church, all I hear about is this fundraiser, that fundraiser. I mean, COVID, when folks were not in the churches, really hurt the bottom line of at least the parishes I've been involved with. And I would, I would think that's probably true.
What you're basically saying, it would have been just to the churches, the warming shelters were not about.
Well, they didn't. That's why we stepped up.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, COVID created a problem for the congregant settings, but it was also the capacity. Most of the volunteers were older and at higher risk of of infection and so were unable to volunteer.
I'm also saying, I don't think the churches have the dollars.
Right. Yeah, they don't.
They have some and they can contribute and we've gotten some commitments that, hey, you know, if if there's, if there's an effort and we can put some in and we've got, the only other place they have any other resources, HAMs, to do small projects, but they don't have enough to continue on a daily basis. And I think the example of running the community center that the city did, I mean, that was Teresa and Jessica were, it's exhausting. And we were doing it just on the daytime time and and there are eight facilities there. And it it was a constant day to day, all day, working with them and trying to get things stabilized. And it made a difference, you know, they were different than when they first came when we moved them out last week. Completely different people than when they moved in. Are they going to go back? Yeah, they're back on the streets. They don't have that resource to protect them, to to maintain that stability and that's important.
Can I ask a question? Why, why did we give seventy-two hours notice for here, the city hall and for out of the water treatment? I know, I know we gave it for the.
Yeah, the seventy-two hours here, we have things we have to take care of and fix here. We had some Berman problems. We have some electrical problems that were going on on that side of the building that we had to take care of. So that was the the reason there. The other reason there was there wasn't room for more. And if we closed the community center, they were going to come over here. And we couldn't do that here. That just didn't have the capacity here. So we closed both buildings so we could take care of that. The water treatment plant, that's parking, that's a parking lot. And so the same parking regulations that apply everywhere throughout the community, it's seventy-two hours and you have to move.
But I'm just curious, because what changed?
Nothing changed.
But you were allowing them before.
They were there, they were supposed to be and they were, the police department was trying to watch the seventy-two hours. So they may have missed it due to limitations on the officers and stuff, but they are forcing that with the seventy-two hours. So that's what we're doing in all parking lots and right away is when they hit seventy-two hours, they have to move to another block, a block away.
I guess before I forget, there's a truck in the skate park parking lot that I talked to the Dairy Queen staff and they said, no, that's not ours and the city hasn't been there about it, but it's been there a long time, well over seventy-two.
Okay, yeah, we'll point that out to them because they just haven't looked at that. Yeah, the the city parking lot goes up to the wall of Dairy Queen. That's all, the Dairy Queen doesn't own anything on that side of the property.
Even the parking spaces?
We did not know about seven to hour notice, I just want to say, because I've been personally blamed for giving seventy-two hour notice. We did not know.
We've talked about that in the presentations and everything that we're doing on the rolling homeless, that it's seventy-two hours parking on the streets and the public ways. And that's what has been the law for a long time and we weren't going to change that law. So, yeah, we've we've discussed that as well and we're gonna, we don't see a need to change that. Because that helps prevent areas in town becoming a camp or RVs or or things like that. Now, private parking lots, we don't enforce. Those are, those are up to the private parking lots, owners of those private spaces. And that applies to whether it's a rundown nineteen fifty trailer with towed with a rundown truck or a brand new two hundred and fifty thousand dollar toy hauler, they're all limited to no more than seventy-two hours on the street. The streets are not a storage location.
Yeah, I don't leave my truck on the street for more than seventy-two hours because I don't want it outside.
And and it is one of those things that, yeah, as they find them, they may miss them for a week, but yeah. We try to find those and watch for those. And they'll probably get more than seventy-two hours, just like sometimes parking gets more than the hours because they'll see it and they'll say, oh, that's been there a while. They'll mark it and record it and it's already been there two days and then it gets three more days, so, yeah.
Would it possibly be, I mean, I think it would be helpful for me to have a better understanding of what service providers there are here. Because some of this conversation surrounds some, I can admittedly say some assumptions in my mind about what could be provided here, whether it be through a third party like the RFP was, what realistically are the wait times? Because I'm having, I have some assumption about what that might look like under, under the proposed scenario, but I'd like to.
What do you mean by service providers? There are, I'll break it out. The the main service, the main service providers for shelter or handling the shelter services, you've got St. Vincent de Paul, Carry It Forward, Square One Villages, they do some.
Shelter care?
And shelter care. Those are the basic four. And I think there's one new one that has just come in the ring.
And the mission.
What category is that?
Those are the, those are the shelter providers, the ones that are kind of certified and have experience in doing shelter.
Shelter care is super, or shelter care is super backed up the last every time.
Oh, and they, and they all are except for the mission. You know, because the mission has a huge number of beds, but has requirements. So they have barriers is is the challenge.
But that's kind of what I'm trying to understand more. There are service providers, but that's different than the effective services provided to.
Right. Now, these service providers generally do not do it on their own. Most of them contract with an agency to do the service.
Lane County, City of Eugene.
Yeah, City Springfield and those kinds of things, that's what they do. They'll, they'll contract. They're a nonprofit, so they, they work in partnership with the governmental agency, but they're, they're trying to do that. Square One Villages or Square One is doing some things innovatively on their own and St. Vincent de Paul as well with some of their Opportunity Villages and things. But those are, those are moving into the realm or kind of the next step up from an entry level shelter. They're, they're providing it to places where and doing things for individuals that have an income and may be able to pay rent and have stabilized already and are directly off the street. These are individuals that.
And and there is also, I mean, Eugene's putting in a seventy-five bed low barrier shelter as well. And they're all part of a coordinated entry system that's actually county wide. So our agency does what's called front door assessments. We just started because we're a small agency, but Looking Glass has done it for years. Others in the community do them to get folks onto a list, to get into shelter, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, depending on what their needs are. The problem is in the past, there were so few resources compared to the number of folks on it. And it's based on acuity. So it's how many issues folks are dealing with would rise them to the top. It wasn't a first come, first served or isn't scenario. They're actually looking at reevaluating their assessment tool. But basically, that's been in place for years and the county is primarily, I mean, Eugene does a big piece of it, but the county HMIS system, Homeless Management Information System, is how folks are entered into that system.
And then, and then you also have Looking Glass and they deal predominantly just for youth. They're dealing with youth up to eighteen or, yeah, they go to eighteen, maybe sometimes they'll go to twenty-one.
They have some programs that are twenty-four.
Twenty-one programs. But and and they'll, they they concentrate on youth and we have Looking Glass in the community, but they don't do sheltering here. There is a shelter service to them in Eugene, Station Seven. That we actually have some youth from Cottage Grove that have gone to Station Seven. And every day they bring them back to Cottage Grove. Because they, they want to go to school here. Their friends are here. They don't, they're afraid of Eugene. So they go up there and stay in Station Seven and then come back down. They're trying to do some of that and do more outreach or services here in the community for youth. They have a, their rural homeless or rural youth program where they're, they're, and they're reviving it. It had, they've established it a number of years ago and then it just kind of didn't go anywhere. But they're trying to revive it where they allow, where they create matchup youth that need housing and need a home situation with members of the community that want to go through some training and be able to provide a home for them as well. So that's, that's an opportunity that's coming, which should be coming soon as well. And they're working on their facility out here on on Whittaker. So all of those, those are the big ones that are doing your sheltering and and shelter services. Then you go to your mental health facilities.
So I I understand that there can be a list of ones that are doing certain things. But when setting policy, typically you would have, I have reports that would give me the efficacy of each one of those things, the parameters around how many people get filtered in, what are the requirements for those things, so that when you make a decision, you kind of have a clear understanding with as good of information as possible about what the expected outcome is going to be based on the reliability of the information you can get. We're, we're trying to create policy is effective and meets the outcomes. And and so that's, that's, that's the kind of detail I would be looking for and I think we'd all at least want insight.
You're not going to get that. You're not going to get that ahead of time because you, because you have to have the service, you can't, you can go to, you can go to some of these organizations, say, what, what are you doing other places? But does that apply to your policy, what you want done here in Cottage Grove?
So no, there's going to be requirements.
Right.
There's going to be requirements that each one of them operate under. You certainly have a guide that you go through.
And we have outcomes that we project every year and we work towards, absolutely. And this process, I would assume, does as well.
And that was listed in the RFP. There was, in their response forms, what is your percentage that you were going to do? What have you done in other places? What is your experience in that? And so that's how you'd evaluate those. And then at the end of the year. But that's.
It's a predecessor, it's a preceding informational inquiry before, to even know what their, what type of policy to set. That we're going once again back to the, it's not a foregone conclusion to me that the homes or that whatever the proposed provider is the, is the model that is going to be the best for here. I would want to know from a community group that's forming up, what is, what is your plan? What is your capacity? What's your capability? What relationships do you have developed for what services? And how effective are they? So all of these things that would be contracted out. I mean, it's a massive problem to solve admittedly, but it should be data driven, it should be information driven and that should be able to be reviewed.
So so yes, all information is entered into that HMIS system. So you can look at a year later, a person that's entered into it, and that was a requirement in the RFP. So every, so when you're seeing that hundred and eighty-eight people in the homeless count, you're looking at mostly the folks coming through community sharing who are indicating that they're unhoused. Excuse me. And so if you had another provider doing shelter services, they would be doing the same thing. That person would be entered in, they'd be going through case management, there would be case management notes that would be in there, self-sufficiency plans, what have you. And then you would look down the road to see, do they continue? So like in our housing programs, we actually have to call or contact these folks at six months in a year to see if they're still state rehoused. And those are part of the outcomes of our housing programs. And so the, there is absolutely tools out there to measure those outcomes and whether you're achieving or not.
Certainly, and so, and so that's just the shelter part, right? So then there's the mental health part, okay? So who are the available providers? What are the wait times to be seen? What are the prioritization of mental state that go in? Are the courts functioning as we expect? Or is there something that we can do there? I understand that there's a requirement to have a mental health evaluator and Southland Mental Health does not provide that. We're in town, we have that provider, they don't have it, so the courts can't make that evaluation to get people headed into the state hospital effectively. So there's, I mean, there's issues with the providers that we have here. And they might, if we just, if we just go, okay, we don't understand what those issues are, we might be making a decision that creates more, that doesn't address an issue. So that's, that's why I'm just saying there's, I would like to see more information about the available providers that would be utilized under any scenario and say, do we have a hole in the system? I'm assuming that we're all coming from the same place, which is we want to be maximum effective for the people that are experiencing homelessness here, to get them out of that situation and into a place where they, they're not dependent on it, on anyone else.
So so there is also what's called a high risk team in Cottage Grove and it's with senior disability services, it's with our agency, it's with Cottage Grove Police Department, with Southland Mental Health. And actually, individuals who rise to that level, whether it be seniors who are just unable to care for themselves, I'm sorry, fire department's also part of that group. So if the fire department goes into a home and they find a senior who can't take care of themselves or if I have difficulties with somebody who really is having a severe psychotic break, they are referenced to that and then can be placed in the Johnson unit. The county, we heard, is going to be creating some more psychiatric services, which is awesome, because I've said this before, the state has completely abandoned us when it comes to mental health issues. I was told by one of the providers at the hospital there that unless somebody's convicted as criminally insane, there is not a bed for them. In fact, I was reading in the Guard a while back that they actually are getting sued because they're supposed to place that person within two weeks and they're six months out because they don't have the space. So our legislature has absolutely abandoned us when it comes to funding these facilities. And, and, you know, that is a shame and something we should continue to lobby at. I know LOC has had that as a top priority for years and I would continue to advocate for that. But but there are, on a lesser level, groups that are working to address that.
And it's good to be aware of what that, that landscape and that reality that we're living in will mean for us when we're trying to be, to do things here. Because once again, I'll state an assumption, a lot of the people in that case are on the edge. Because I, as I understand it, for that mental commitment to happen, like through a court system, that person has to not even know where they are. That's basically the, and understand who, what, what's going on around them. And that's a pretty low or high, low barrier for for that. And someone that is cognizant is still going to be probably in that gap that wouldn't be able to be in the shelter, wouldn't be welcomed in it based on behavior and that we're going to be in the same situation as as we're before. So I'd love to brainstorm around addressing that. That seems like the biggest impact on our community is people in that category. Because many of the others, you know, as you move on up from that, there's going to be some middle ground and then there's going to be some that can take a hand up in someone's camper or something like that. And we should come around that. But and I know here, or just this bad situation that we're in with the mental health availability, that sounds like we're years away from Lane County's, minimum years away from Lane County's efforts there. But what does that do? You know, under, under a scenario where you do whatever modality that you have for having a shelter, is that, does that fall directly on law enforcement's hands to just keep moving them around town? Or do we have a, a plan for getting them help? Or do we have a, a plan for getting them help?
Well, I, I have to tell you, I have watched Carry It Forward at our shower trailer work with folks. I've certainly talked with them a lot. And I will tell you, they have worked through some pretty serious issues with folks. You know, maybe not to that level of criminally insane, but certainly far beyond my abilities to work with folks. And I, that's what I've, you know, tried to say over and over is I'm just so impressed with that, well, the ability of these folks to work with folks with severe challenges. Because it's, it's, it's a real skill. And one I get better at, but I certainly fail compared to these folks. And once again, it's not the answer, but it's one small step in that direction.
I was impressed with my conversations with them. Can I allow them to say that? So where, where are we, Joe? I mean, we've basically been through this now probably for twelve hours, if not more. So Richard, we need to, we're basically to the point, we need to choose the style of what we want to do and then look at an RFP to run that.
Well, if you're, if you're going to go to an alternative shelter, yeah. And if you're not, then you need to say, okay, what are we going to do in lieu of that? And how, how far can we go in the restrictions and regulations? I mean, if you're going to do a shelter, that gives you the most latitude in managing your public lands. I mean, it definitely does that.
I personally would like to see the different organizations come and give us presentations to see like what it is that they offer. And I know there's a community group, I know there's Carry It Forward, Salvation Army, I guess, is one. I, I don't know.
I don't think Salvation Army has anything.
Oh, St. Vincent's, sorry.
Shelter care, St. Vincent's.
Yeah, St. Vincent's. So I, I would love to hear, you know, like the diversity in the programs.
Community support in shelters.
See what's best for our particular community.
And, and see, that's what the purpose of the RFP is.
Right.
Is we'll get those proposals and you'll be able to sit down with the RFPs and evaluate, yeah, they hit the mark here, they didn't hit the mark there. And, and choose someone or choose no one as a result of that. Having them come and give them what they want to do is not, you need to decide what you want them to do and ask them to respond and see what they can do if they can meet the needs of the community.
In other words, can they, can they fill the RFP?
And they'll provide, if they can't meet it, they can still provide the options and they'll do that. But because they have different, different expertise in some of them, you probably won't get, I'd be very surprised if Square One does anything because they're doing a fourteen million dollar project. And, and so I don't think their, their capacity's all in that right now.
I just find it interesting that we can't get presentations over something that this city has never done before. And I think that that's really strange to me. You know, the, I, I feel like, like there's a lot of different ways that this can be done. And, and just to be told, no, we got to send out an RFP and put it out when we don't really exactly know what to ask for. And you're telling us we need to rely on them. And yet, we're telling them in an RFP what we want and what they're going, you know. So I'm just like, to me, I would rather them come and talk to us about it. And I don't see anything wrong with it. If we were doing a water treatment plant, they would come and tell us, you know, the different, you know, like we've, we've had electricity come and talk to us. We've had a lot of different things pitched to us over the years.
If you were doing a water treatment plant, the engineers would design it, they'd put the bids out, you'd get the bid proposals.
That's a, that's a really poor example that I just gave. Because there is a, a design that is pretty typical across the nation and their standards. This is so new.
Public contracting, this is the way it works. We cannot, we cannot show preference to a provider. We have to throw it out there. I actually, in my last contract for the Community Service Center, had them add, they wanted me to be able to fill out paperwork for people for other programs, for organ health plan, for social security, for whatever. And, and I'm not opposed to doing that, but the amount of money that they were offering was like, yeah, no, I'm not doing that. And that's what I basically came back in my RFP and I said, gosh, we'd be thrilled to do that, but with the amount of funding in this proposal, we cannot do that. So there is back and forth in that process. Now, the risk is if somebody else applies for that RFP and they're willing to do it, that I could end up not getting that RFP as an agency. But you also have to balance, can I afford to do this? If you're not able to make the, you know, the balance sheet work, it's just not going to happen. And so in government contracting, you have to be very careful about offering any sort of bias. I think that what the city manager has done by coming up with the contracts from Lane County and Eugene and Springfield is we've looked at what are the other organizations doing now and created a proposal so that we can get that feedback. You could also put it out there and get no responses and say, okay, what do we need to do to get this to where it's an appealing program? And so that could also happen.
Lane County just did that. Lane County just did an RFP and nobody responded, so they revised it and did a new one.
And the Warming Shelter was the exact same thing. We did not, there was not any original bidder to do that. And so they were able to just add it to our contract as a result. So that's part of the public contracting piece. In fact, there's appeals, oh gosh, read the thing, I mean, oh my gosh. It's, it's a lot of legalese about everything to do with, you know, government contracting. It's very rigid.
I guess I could, that's okay. I, I thought of something after one of our last conversations where we had talked about creating such boundaries, like you have to be a Cottage Grove resident for six months. Would that be considered a barrier?
To some extent it would, but it's intentional to try to make sure that we address those that are, that are residents here. And, and we don't bring, because we're relatively close to Eugene and, and they have a shortage of facilities there that we don't want to be, have an incentive for someone to get a bus ride down here and, and use something that somebody locally could have.
So if we're talking scenarios, somebody comes down from Eugene because they got kicked out of a shelter in Eugene, they can't be there. They're now here in our park. We have an alternative shelter, but they haven't ever had any services here. Are we able to say you can't stay in our park? Or what, what does that look like?
In that case, you probably wouldn't be able to say you can't stay in our parks. And that's why the package is a piece of the whole thing. We're going to have some of those restrictions because we may fill the shelters. And if the shelters are full, then we're going to need to be regulating how, how things are managed in the parks or in public spaces. And so it is a package. It's not just one thing fixes it. And it, it's a full spectrum going all the way to working with Homes For Good to develop residential, low-income, very low-income, extremely low-income units. And so it's, we've got to move that whole process. But yeah, I mean, if somebody came down from Eugene and they had no services here and when they, they look up in the, what is it, the HMS system or whatever, they look in that system and say, hey, you've gotten services from this food bank in Santa Clara or wherever. No, you need to, you're not a resident here and this is only open. That'll get around pretty quick and we won't have them coming down then because they're not going to hang around down here. You know, they'll go back to Eugene because there's more services, more opportunities for them to, to get something happening there than being here. So that's, that's the purpose of that. And, and trying to, to monitor that. We, we want to make sure we don't, we don't attract them, yeah.
And our agency does that. If folks are getting services in Eugene or Springfield, those services goes towards our limits as well. And so folks would not be eligible if they've already hit their limits on services in that area. So I don't see that as being a big issue.
So I guess I want to know if, if we're willing to make changes to the code that we need to and, and give space for the community to step up and maybe define a timeline where if there's nothing viable by a certain time, we move forward or if we, or if there's no support for that at all, like on the majority.
The problem is that we really can't do any of the other components without first determining what we're going to do as far as shelter goes. Because if we want to be restrictive and say, no, only these parks as overflow, we need to have shelter services. If we don't, I think we can limit certain areas, but it's going to be pretty broad use as opposed. Otherwise, I think we'd really run afoul.
I don't think you have parks as overflow, it's you restrict the parks you don't want camping in.
Right, but I think you have more latitude to restrict parks if you have shelter options available. If you don't have shelter options, I think that then you run the risk of lawsuit if you are too restrictive in your other areas. So I think that's the problem with trying to do that step first is that we don't know what our legal liability is going to be without first determining.
I think what Councilor Irvin's trying to say though is that he wants to give some time for community involvement to step up and give a timeline on that. Correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, and open up the availability for them to put things in place.
Well, and that's, I would like to change those codes and the camping trailers because those are happening, tents are happening in people's yards anyway. So I want to change that just so we're at least moving forward in some direction.
So that we're in compliance.
Yeah, because having midnight meetings and accomplishing nothing is not productive. And so I think we should do that as soon as staff could get that.
We've been saying that for a while. I mean, hopefully we can do that.
I, I don't have any problem giving a, I don't think long window, but a short window of time to get commitments. I mean, I think that if, you know, if we can reach out to nonprofits, to service clubs, to churches and see if there are commitments, I certainly don't have any heartburn waiting, you know, weeks to a month. I don't think we can wait forever to make a decision because I agree with the mayor is that at some point we do want to make sure we have restrictions on rights of ways and those sorts of things. And so I certainly don't have any heartburn waiting, you know, a period of time to see if we can get commitments.
And they might tell us what they need and we could open doors essentially to, to make it happen if we see progress. I mean, if, if, if nothing happens, like I, I see the next step is, is going with something, you know, some modified version of the original proposal. I just, I have this gut feeling that the community is going to show up.
I'm smart back.
Counselor Stone?
I mean, we can look for sure, but it seems the notion of someone providing a shelter is tectile, tectile management is, I would say, well, I think that has to be sheltering. The laws clearly have provided, I tell people, you know, they're here to manage. Community can step up in any number of ways. That's step two, three, four, five, this is step one. You know, and that's where we're going to place. I don't think shelter is the answer for the neighborhood of Cottage, of course. But it is step one. I think any further delay, I would rather get some things done. Any further delay is harmful to folks who are very vulnerable already. We can sit up here and talk about how much you care about, you're not doing it for them.
Some of us are actually housing.
Yeah, nothing has changed. I mean, this is.
I'm not, I'm not saying, no, it is, I'm just saying.
I'm saying to not, what we're doing here isn't a lack of care or inaction.
I understand what.
You did.
But in action, it's space, whether or not you have any.
What, what we're saying is let's take the time to make good decisions here. And if, even if it ends up being the original decision, at least we've done our due diligence and the community can stand behind it. That's what I'm saying. And I think that that's what Councilor Irvin Roberts are saying as well. Is let's, let's really, let's give this some thought. I mean, it's, the emergency right now seems very immediate, but the long haul is going to be very important in what happens and results for this community. So let's not make hasty decisions, let's do what's right for this community, one way or the other. And it could be the original plan, but let's, let's work together and figure this out. And I think in order to really do what's right for this community, we need to hear from the community as far as this is a community-based group that would like to make a presentation. And I think we should listen to it. I think we should listen to everyone that has ideas. I think we should reach out to the churches. I think we should move in that direction and, and really take it to heart. You know, really give this some serious thought.
Well, we got a new clock there. Should we go, maybe have a, a real town hall then?
Oh, I.
No? Just give people their three, four minutes?
I think, I think our council meeting would.
Just, I'm just saying, we need to hear more.
Well, I, I, I mean, I hate to say this, I certainly always want input, but I think we've certainly heard where folks are at. I think I'd be much more interested in trying to find out what solutions are out there. I, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm more interested in finding solutions than I am complaints. And if folks are wanting to come to provide solutions, I am more than happy to listen.
I agree with that a hundred percent.
You know, and so that's kind of where I'm at. We do have kind of a window, eventually we're going to have weather. And so whatever proposal we do is going to have some construction required. So that's why I was saying, you know, if we took, say, a month at the outside to see if there are folks, I guess I'm wondering how we would do that? Would we, as counselors, reach out? Would we do public, you know, service messages? I mean, what would be the mechanism to try to garner, you know, the community partners?
To get them involved, yeah.
That would want to be involved? I guess that's, that's my next question.
I think we can, we can speak independently of, what, I'm assuming that we can't collectively move together and do a phone tree kind of thing. And encourage people, we can give them information on how to get, or if they want to do a presentation, we can get them on the agenda through a couple of different meetings. They've been there. So I think there's mechanisms to do it. I think it should be noted that, you know, they haven't had a lot of time to, to gel considering it wasn't until a city approach, city-first approach didn't happen right away that they had some hope that they might be able to do something. So I would, I would ask for some, you know, realize how, how much is involved to get up and running something so quickly. Some leniency there, but I guess from that, just get them on, get them on the agenda and direct them to the city manager's office. If it seems viable, then we either set a position or a policy that this is the approach we want to facilitate or change, but change it.
And, and I could be wrong. I think that the churches and nonprofits have been trying to do this and they just don't have the resources to do it. But I respect your opinion and I'm willing to go ahead and go, reach out to them and try to, try to see if they're willing to step up. You know, I think if they could have, they already would have, but that's just my opinion. So it's, you know, in fairness to everybody else, I'm willing to let that, see what happens.
So do we want to look at a date to have this on the agenda?
Would it be reasonable to have it in July?
Maybe the, is the twenty-seventh enough time, do you think?
What, where do you do this?
We have next week and then the twenty-seventh in this month. We have the eleventh and I don't think I'd want to go beyond that in July.
Can we do the eleven?
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, I don't think you'd want to do it sooner.
Could it be another work session though? We have a bunch of presentations. Does it have to take up a city council meeting? So we could do something like. So we could do something like, probably not before the 4th. Maybe, maybe we have a typical July 11th city council, but a July 18th, we hear all the presentations and it's still a public forum where it's, it's on TV, but it's, it's, we have a very specific agenda. We're, we're following the agenda so it's not like folks can comment outside of that. It is, here's, here's 10 people that are giving presentations.
18th works better for me.
Okay. Is that another Yak night?
Yeah.
Mr. Maris. Well, they're certainly welcome to come.
Talk about being engaged.
Yeah, a lot of them will be gone.
Oh, great.
Uh, will that be 6:00?
Oh, good point. Let's put that in the calendar. That sounds good to me.
So if we do those code changes, can we eliminate some parks for camping at the same time? At least two of them?
Probably not.
Okay.
Because they're not, that's not creating an alternative shelter under the definition. Because you're not going to take any kind of responsibility for, they're not, I mean, they're going to be barriered. The individual property owners are going to be able to decide who is on their property. So.
Because I thought we could designate two for no camping. Not saying you could camp in the others.
Oh, and, and that's something that, you know.
Because with what's, you know, we've got concerts in the park next week and we've got Bohemian Days next month.
What we have done right now is we've issued a policy under the ability that I have to regulate parks and resources. And so we've said that they can't be in any reservable space. That's spaces that are reserved, the amphitheater, the pavilions, the gazebo, those facilities in the parks or sport courts. So that's where we've set up some parameters that are trying to limit at least that little bit.
Are the structures in Trailhead under that?
No. They're not in that. We pulled those out. They're actually reservable as well, but nobody has reserved them for a couple of, several years up ahead of COVID.
Since the chili cook off there?
Yeah. Since the Summer of Love or, you know, one of those things. But yeah, I think BMD did something in there once, but.
So I, I mean, another homework project for us should be to be looking at this RFP and writing notes on it, right, for us individually? So that when we get to that point, we each have our version of this that we could discuss and work on. Your shot?
Well, I would say if you want changes on there that aren't on there, then yes.
Yes. Well, I'm sure there will be, yeah.
For me, I've looked at it. So we all good? Thank you, Mr. Irvin. Well, we can wrap up six minutes early then. We're adjourned.